Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting this evening. We begin our meeting tonight with a swearing in of our -- three of our new board members, and swearing in Hazel, who's continuing her term. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Weber, who will perform the ceremony for us.
So if you just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Hazel Hobbs.
I, Hazel Hobbs.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member of the Board of Education.
The duties as a member of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Brendan Hayes.
I, Brendan Hayes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. One more. It is, but you don't have to. Okay. I, Thomas G. Cronin.
I, Thomas G. Cronin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. I, Maria D. Naughton.
I, Maria D. Naughton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member.
The duties as a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
One more. It is, but you don't have to. Okay. I, Thomas G. Cronin.
I, Thomas G. Cronin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
And the Constitution of the State of Connecticut.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to law.
According to law.
The duties as a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now that you're sitting here anyway, so you might as well go over it here. I just wanted to quickly give you these red folders and tell you what was inside. The first one, the first item you'll come across is just a memo from me that explains the Code of Ethics. And the next item is actually a copy of the Code of Ethics, which is from our town code. And I believe the next item is the Code of Ethics Statement of Disclosure of Interest in Transaction. And if you read the Code of Ethics, there's a portion in there that talks about this Section 17-5E. If this occurs, if this instance occurs, then you would just file this form with me within 10 days of the occurrence, okay? Then I believe the next page is a statement for you all to sign, saying that you have received the Code of Ethics and you acknowledge its content. And you see that there? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Thanks. Paperwork. We're from the government. We're here to help you. especially. The next item is a summary of the Freedom of Information requirements for all board and commission and ad hoc committees. And it describes the types of, the three types of meetings that you can have, and what the requirements are as far as notices, agendas, additions to the agenda, and filing of minutes. It also goes a little bit into executive sessions, and when it's permitted, and adjourned meetings, and continued hearings. And then the last item is from a FOI workshop that we had, and it has a lot of good, has good definitions and some good case law. So anyway, there will not be a test on that, so you are all set. Congratulations. Best of luck to all of you.
I was appointed, so I did that in Claudia's office. I was appointed. I had an actual, like, man, and they were videoing. I thought everyone did it. She's like, it's almost like I have to see someone so excited.
It's a big thing. It's a big deal.
I'm so efficient, I forgot to have you sign the oath book. Would you mind coming back over here to sign, please?
I think that's a good thing. Yeah. All eternity. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Weber. Congratulations and welcome once again. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to First Electman Malazi, who will officiate over our elections of officers. Rob?
Thank you, Dr. Lutze. It's again my honor, actually six years in a row. I subs for Jeb Walker one year, so six years in a row of being part of your meeting on this historic night for your organization to help and facilitate the election of new officers for the Board of Education. First and foremost, thank you to the three new folks who are joining us, and Hazel, on your reelection, and to the entire Board of Education for your volunteer service to our community. We all understand what you mean to this town and what this town means to you. So thank you very much for all you're doing and continue to do. So, as Dr. Lutze said, I will officiate over the, over the new officer election. The first thing I will do is call for a motion from the floor for nominees for the Office of Chairman of the Board of Education. Hazel Hobbs.
I nominate Deanna Carlson for Board of Education Chair. Mrs. Carlson has lived in New Canaan for close to 20 years, and during that time she has been an active board member for several organizations, including the United Way of New Canaan, the Young Women's League, and West School PTC. This year, she has been the Board of Education Secretary, Resource Committee Chair, and member of the Negotiation Team. In these positions, she capably used her finance degree from University of Illinois, financial management and analyst background at GE Capital, her chartered financial analyst experience and financial management background from working in the GE Capital Financial Management Program. She assisted our board members, town boards, the Audit Committee, and parents with a new understanding of the budget process by using both her financial and insurance expertise, as well as her clear explanations, warm humor, and leadership skills. She has two children in the New Canaan schools, which coupled with her readings and educational literature, keep her well aware of the changes and challenges in the education world. I therefore nominate Deanna Carlson for the position of Board of Education Chair.
Thank you, Hazel. We have a nomination before us. Is there a second on that nomination? Yes, Jennifer?
I'd like to second the motion for Deanna Carlson.
So we have a, we have a second from Jennifer Richardson. Any further discussion? Then I will call for a vote. All in favor of Deanna Carlson as the next chairman of the Board of Ed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? It's a landslide. Way to go, Deanna. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done, Board. Now we have another office to fill. We have the Office of Secretary. Oh no, Vice Chair, I think we should do next. Right, Vice Chair is next. So again, I'll call from the floor for a nomination, please, for Vice Chairman of the Board of Education. Penny Ration.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Sherri West for the Chair, for the position of Vice Chair of the Board of Education. Sherri has been on the Board of Education just two and a half years, but she has already made her presence felt in a really positive fashion. She's brought the experience she has in her 14-year successful career at GE to bear on the Board of Education, and we've seen the results from that. As the Chair of the Communications Committee, she streamlined and made more effective our communications with parents and the community, and I commend the work of the entire committee in that regard. She is the parent, the proud parent of three active involved children in the New Canaan public school systems. She's been involved with the Saks PTC and the West School PTC, and also that in addition to her two and a half years on the Board, she has developed a deep understanding of what it takes to provide a great education to the students of New Canaan on a K through 12 level. I think what I like about Sherri is that she listens, she learns, she asks really incisive questions, and she advances the thinking of a group. I saw her do that in the superintendent search committees on which I served with her. And actually, her enthusiasm is just plain contagious. And what she does is she makes us all, I think, want to do better and act better and serve the students of New Canaan. So for that, I think she has a deep commitment to fiscal responsibility and to making certain that New Canaan maintain, remains a leader in education.
Thank you very much. The motion is in front of us. Do I have a second for Sherri West's nomination as Vice Chair of the Board of Education, please?
Rob, I'd like to second the nomination.
Sangita on the second. Thank you so much, Sangita. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on that as well. All in favor of Sherri West, please answer aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have our second landslide of the night. Way to go, Sherri. Congratulations. Yep. And lastly, we have the nomination of Secretary of the Board of Education. Again, I'll call for a nomination from the floor for the Secretary of the Board of Education. Deanna.
I'd like to nominate, should I bring this closer? Sorry. I'd like to nominate Jennifer Richardson for the Office of Secretary of the Board of Education. Jen's been an integral member of the Board of Education Communications Committee for the past two years, serving as a primary point of contact for the Board of Education on the district website redesign, in addition to being part of, of the team that for the past two budget cycles provided budget quick notes for the Board of Education publication to keep parents and the public abreast of the Board of Education's budget updates. I'm confident that Jen will prove to be an excellent secretary for the Board of Education.
Terrific nomination before us. Do we have a second for Jennifer Richardson as Secretary of the Board of Education? Sherri West.
Yes, I'd like to second the nomination.
We have the second. Any further discussion on that nomination? Hearing none, again, I'll call for an affirmative. Aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're three for three, folks. Wonderful. You've got a terrific new board. Really delighted to hear the names and really look forward to all of us working together. Hazel Hobbs, I'll miss working with you. It's been, you've been a wonderful, wonderful chairman, and just really thank you for your effort. Scott Gress, who's leaving also, but we've got a good team, you set a great example.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
You're very welcome. Rob, thank you. Pleasure. Everyone have a good meeting. Deanna, you get to. Okay.
Heavy is the hand that wields the gavel.
Thank you.
Sherri.
Yes.
See you tomorrow.
So now, there we have it. So now we're opening the meeting.
Yes. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if Dr. Lutze and the Board will indulge me, I promise I won't do this again, I'd like to deviate from the agenda for one minute in order to thank Hazel Hobbs for her leadership of the Board over the past two years. There's been an enormous amount of transition in the district during her tenure. We've hired a new high school principal. We've hired a new Director of Finance and Operations, and oh my goodness, we hired a new superintendent. So in addition to that, she's overseen two significant capital projects in the district, the Saks School Building project and the South School Windows project. So we've done quite a bit in the district. And, oh by the way, she's gotten a bunch of us new board members up to speed on what it's, you know, like to be a new board member. So I appreciate that. Hazel's been a mentor to me, and I can't thank her enough for the time she's spent for the betterment of New Canaan public schools and the 4,174 students who attend our five public schools. Thank you, Hazel, for your service as Chair, and we're fortunate to have had you over the past two years as our Chair.
Thank you. Can I just say a word and reply? I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's been on the Board the last two years. Really an extraordinary group of people. No matter how many times I called and said, something's the effect of, there's a meeting tonight in about three hours, can you come? And they came, and they would show up and come, and supportive of each other, and collaborative feeling that's really been phenomenal to work with. And the things that you've achieved, all of you should pat yourselves on the back because it's made a real difference for the kids and for the variety of situations that they're now having. So thank you. It's been a real honor to work with you, and I look forward to continuing to work, but under capable, capable leadership of those who were elected tonight.
So now you call the meeting to order.
Okay. Well, I already called it to order. So, okay, I guess we'll officially call it to order again. If we, the first item of business is to review and approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, November 16th. If you take a minute to look at that, and once you've looked at it, if I could have a motion to approve the agenda? Penny?
I'll move.
And a second? Sangita? All in favor? Okay. Motion approved. Looks like it's unanimous. All right, moving on, and this will be for, I guess, the members who were in attendance at last meeting, because it's a little, a few of us that are new this year, this, tonight. We'll start with the meeting of the November 9th Board, and if I could, if you could take a look at those minutes, and if there's any additions or corrections? Hazel?
I have, I have a correction for the minutes. The Subcommittee reports, and since I was giving those reports, I take full responsibility for saying that in the report that has to do with the leadership goal, there is a change that needs to be made, and this would be on the last page of the minutes, at the top of the page, where it says, "The leadership goal included district goals which were discussed and approved in an executive session." Actually, we don't approve in an executive session, so that was misstated, unfortunately, and it is, it should be. Instead, "The leadership goal included superintendent leadership and district goals which were discussed in executive session in June 2015." So the "and approved" needs to be removed.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, could I have a motion to approve the November 9th minutes as amended? Second? Sherri? Could I have a, could I get a number of, everybody raise their hand that's in favor of the amended minutes? All those who were in attendance can vote. Okay. So it looks like everybody.
I think he was here. I think he was here.
He's ready to get right on.
Okay. All right, so the minutes are approved as amended. Moving on to the minutes from the November 11th special session. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve? Jennifer Richardson, may I have a second? Sangita? All those in favor? Looks like it's unanimous for those in attendance. Those are approved. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, comments from the public. "To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject." Do I have anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to reports and recognition. And we're lucky to have Ms. Pianka here to give us an update on special education. Dr. Lutze, do you have anything you'd like to?
I certainly do. We are very fortunate to have Ms. Pianka to give us this update. A few years ago, Darlene shared an update with Board, about special education with the Board of Education, and I think all that saw and heard, that presentation, came away with a much deeper understanding of the complexities around special education and the commitment that the New Canaan Public Schools makes to all of its students, regular and special education students alike. I know Ms. Pianka, and she'll, I'm sure she'll talk about this tonight, is supported by a very talented team of folks, some of whom are with us this evening, who really do dedicate their lives every day to helping some of our neediest students to succeed and excel as students here in the New Canaan Public Schools in preparation for what's to come. So I would turn it over to Darlene.
Before, before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to tell you that in this January, I will be in this position for 10 years, and it flew by. But what I wanted to say to you is that over that period of time, countless members on a few different Boards of Education have supported us through time in the most wonderful way. And I'd like to take a moment to thank all of you for the support that I know you'll be giving us in the future. We count on it, and it has been a wonderful relationship, and we do some very complex work, and I've always felt that you have understood, asked good questions, and been with us in, in our work. So I'd like to thank you for that. So, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to present the vast array of programs and services for our students known as Pupil Services, and to provide you with an understanding of many of its components, I apologize if it's long. It is a lot of information, but I will try to be concise, and the impact they have on our educational process here in New Canaan. So, none of the exceptional level of service our district provides could be possible without our special education administrators. Carol Pacala and Mary Ann DeFaleese, and Carol and Mary Ann are seated in the back row hiding. Carol, actually, Mary Ann heads up our preschool through grade five, special education programs and related services. And Carol manages from sixth grade through our launch program, which you'll hear about later on. That's our program for 18 to 21-year-old students. Both of the administrators have the responsibility for the oversight and training of all of our staff, and our related services staff are included. They're a most valuable aspect, asset in respect to their level of knowledge and their expertise in a variety of areas, in guiding our progress and creating and maintaining a very high level of programming. And they have wonderful relationships with families that are very much based in trust. Nora Daly, our Student Supports Coordinator, plays an integral role in the organization and facilitation of our school climate work in the district, as well as leading in the Student Support Professionals Group, which I'll explain in a few moments. And Danielle Maslar, who also works through the Central Office as a district school psychologist, has the responsibility for the case management of our outplayed students and works with those students and their families. So here you will see some of the mandates that we are obligated to. ESEA, also known as No Child Left Behind, is the body of laws that assures and supports our accountability and ensures that all of our students succeed. IDEA is the law that ensures services to students with disabilities, and the provision of early intervention, special education, and also related services. Section 504 is a federal law that's designed to protect the rights of individuals with disabilities, both actually in schools and in the workplace. It's a civil rights statute, and we're also obligated by federal and state law to ensure a process that ensures positive school climate and school security. I wanted you to know that Pupil Services encompasses the inclusion of both general and special education staff as they relate to the issues of instruction, medical, and clinical needs, and these are some of the areas in which that takes place. In terms of an encapsulated description of what special it is, it really is specially-designed instruction. There's a much longer, more detailed description of that, but really, as minimally defined, it's special classes or programs or services that are designated to address the needs of students who are identified as having needs. Here we see many of the requirements for special education that are based in the law, as well as in our philosophical perspective. They all serve us well. The, I'll explain what, what some of these are in a few moments, but the, what I wanted to highlight in this slide is that special education is a service. It's not a program. It is not a place where students go to just receive their services. It's, we have an inclusive philosophy that implies that every child who's identified can learn and progress, and we give them the tools that they need to do that. These are the categories for eligibility for special education. As you can see, there are many. I won't go through the whole list. You can refer to it at your leisure. I wanted you to know that there's a really, there's a very prescribed and involved process of evaluation and teamwork that's required to make a decision about one of these classifications. It involves a lot of people and, and a very deep process. This will give you an idea of the representation of groups of students in the areas in which they're classified right now in New Canaan. You will notice in the areas of learning disabilities and speech impairment that they are the most common. The autism population also continues to increase, with the most recent confirmed rate at one in 68 births. This slide gives you an idea of our prevalence rate over time in New Canaan, which in the past four years has pretty much remained pretty solidly in the 9% range. Special education programs are very individually-based, and they provide a continuum of services for our students. Typically, they're located in the, in the child's home school as much as possible, and we're required to maximize the amount of time with non-disabled peers or students who haven't been identified as having disability area in general education, and that's prescribed by the law. We're also required to report this, this information to the state on an annual basis, and our as well as in our philosophical perspective. They all serve us well. The, I'll explain what some of these are in a few moments, but the, what I wanted to highlight in this slide is that special education is a service, it's not a program. It is not a place where students go to just receive their services. It's, we have an inclusive philosophy that implies that every child who's identified can learn and progress, and we give them the tools that they need to do that. These are the categories for eligibility for special education. As you can see, there are many. I won't go through the whole list, you can refer to it at your leisure. I wanted you to know that there's a really, there's a very prescribed and involved process of evaluation and teamwork that's required to make a decision about one of these classifications. It involves a lot of people and a very deep process. This will give you an idea of the representation of groups of students in the areas in which they're classified right now in New Canaan. You will notice in the areas of learning disabilities and speech impairment that they are the most common. The autism population also continues to increase, with the most recent confirmed rate at one in 68 births. This slide gives you an idea of our prevalence rate over time in New Canaan, which in the past four years has pretty much remained pretty solidly in the 9% range. Special education programs are very individually-based, and they provide a continuum of services for our students. Typically, they're located in the child's home school as much as possible, and we're required to maximize the amount of time with non-disabled peers or students who haven't been identified as having disability area in general education, and that's prescribed by the law. We're also required to report this information to the state on an annual basis and are rated as such on that percentage. So I mentioned a continuum of services a few months ago, and what you can see in this slide is that continuum moves from least restrictive to most restrictive environment, and can range from the top of that list, from anything to just general education with some special education consultation, all the way through residential programming and hospitalization and everything in between. A planning and placement team process is, a PPT is a term that you saw earlier, and we're required by law to have this group of people. It's a meeting for every identified child that takes place at least annually, and for some students, there are a multitude of these meetings over the course of the year. They require representation from general education and special education, whatever related services are applicable to the needs of the student and an administrator for every meeting. Last year, there were over 1,000 PPT meetings held in New Canaan. All of them must include parents toward an agreement on the program that we're making a decision on, and the development of a document that's called an IEP or an Individualized Educational Plan. And that creates goals and objectives for the student, and also includes whatever appropriate accommodations or modifications the student might need in the general education classroom. The document that gets generated from this meeting by law is a 10-page document. Some of these documents, depending on the severity of disability and the volume of needs, can be up to 50 to 60 pages of paperwork, all of which have to meet standards that the state has established in terms of the criteria, and they, and we have to report annually in terms of the evaluation of our district on how those documents are being written. And there are mandated timelines for all of this work, so not only do you need to do it to perfection, but you have to do it quickly, and our staff and our related services staff have the responsibility for getting that work done. Special educators and also related services staff play a role in working collaboratively with and as coaches for general education staff in the process of response to intervention, and that is a process, that is a general education process that takes place for students who are exhibiting a need or a concern academically, and kind of a parallel to this process, although not in as great depth, takes place with a team of staff to look at the student's performance and to plan interventions, and to progress monitor those interventions over time prior to identification. And there's a whole process that the state prescribes for that to happen in the areas of reading, writing, and math that also have to be documented, that are presented to this team of people when we get to the next step. So how does the process work? And this is kind of a schema of how it works. The planning and placement team meeting looks at, to evaluate the student to determine whether there's a need. Those evaluations are reviewed. We look at whether there is an eligibility criteria met or not, and the IEP gets developed and planned by the PPT, and the program's reviewed at least annually. I characterize the programming in two ways. Children are not placed into programs solely on their category of disability. We never say, "This is where you go if you have thus and such disability." As I said earlier, programs are individually designed to meet the needs of a child, and they're typically in the general education milieu whenever that's possible. And so what is least restrictive environment? I mentioned that earlier. You might also know the term inclusion, and basically this implies that we need to educate the child to the maximum extent possible appropriate to the child's needs with their non-disabled peers, as I've already said. The first level of programming that's mandated by law in special education happens at age three. Typically, we are kind of in the loop of monitoring with the Birth to Three System, which is a state-funded system, and are monitoring those children for need upon the child's third birthday. There is a PPT, and the process begins that I just defined. The enrollment for the preschool program is ongoing for three- and four-year-olds. Whenever they are, whenever they are found to be eligible, they are coming in over the course of the year, so not everyone starts at the beginning of the year. It is, it's an ongoing enrollment, and typically, we would like to see a 50-50 ratio with typical peers. Some years, it's 60-40, or somewhere in between 50 and 60, 40 and 50. But it's important that we look at a very close ratio with typical peers to have the appropriate level of role modeling and a classroom environment that simulates a normal preschool environment. There is a transdisciplinary team approach on the preschool level, which basically means all the people that are mentioned below that, the special ed teachers, the speech and language pathologist, the physical therapist, the occupational therapist, the board-certified behavior analyst, that's what all those letters stand for, and some teaching assistants, all work collaboratively as much as possible in what's called a push-in setting, meaning those professionals move into the classroom to work with the students. There also is a fair amount of individualized out-of-classroom work, but whenever it's possible, we push into the classroom. And our preschool classes are located at West School, in the event that you didn't This gives you an idea of our preschool enrollment and prevalence over time. I know it's a long time, but currently, this year, we have a total of 43 students. 27 of them are special education students, and our typical students are at 16. We also have a small number of students who aren't enrolled in the full preschool program but receive speech-only services with one of our speech and language pathologists. And so, in kindergarten through grade 12, I know this slide is a bit sparse, but what I wanted to make the point about is that we have a broad range of programming that's based on all of the students' individual needs over the continuum that I just described in their home school, and these programs are varied and very individually-based, and we find that it works better that way, as opposed to creating an environment that is less real than a typical classroom environment. So, once we get actually to age 14, the Connecticut statutes require that a plan for a student be created in addition to the IEP plan, or actually as part of the IEP plan. We need to begin at age 14, talking in the PPT with the total group on developing a plan to prepare the student for independence once they are completing their educational career. And for some students, that just means a post-secondary educational plan that really defines most of the typical steps that a student would go through to plan to go to college, and for, and the three areas that we're looking to address are employment or post-secondary education. And for some of our students, they also will be having needs that need to be addressed in the area of independent living, as well as community participation. And that is a smaller population of students, but they certainly do exist, and I think that we program for them in a nice way, and I'll tell you about that in a second. This talks a little bit about free and appropriate public education, as it is a term that implies that all of our students receive free and appropriate public education. But for this group of students, it's beyond the chronological age where most of our kids would be leaving us. We have a community-based program that we developed a few years back. It is called the Launch Program. It addresses all the areas that I just defined that we are supposed to address by law. It builds independence and a bridge to the adult world and to the New Canaan community. Our students are located, the program is located at 39 Locust Ave. It's in the suite at the very bottom level of our building for our offices. It is a wonderful location for them. You will see them around town, at the Y, in the library, in their jobs, and they have all learned to successfully navigate the community, and to be happy in the community, and to be as independent as possible in the community, and this makes their parents very happy, and all of us as well. But it was a program that we look to develop, and we, I think we've done a really successful job. It's unique. Not, a lot of school districts in Fairfield County have such a program, and we get a lot of calls and inquiries about it, work pretty regularly. Some of our students, we are not able to program for in district, and so our out-of-district numbers have pretty much remained constant over time, as you'll see here. I want you to know that, as it says, they're only proposed if the school team really feels that they've tried every possible option for programming in the district, even with some newly-applied resources or a number of different plans that we come back to the drawing board and really try to look at something different. And we really come to the point where we've determined that it's not possible to do this, and it is a minority, but typically, these are students who, based on behavior reasons, can't be maintained in our schools, it's not a safe issue for them or for the students that they would be attending school with. I personally monitor all of those placements with Danielle. We visit all of the students and observe them. We have an ongoing progress reporting system that's set up, so we know that if they're ready to come back at any point, we would welcome them back, and we certainly want them here. And so it's never a situation where we are placing a student and this is a plan that will never end. There are a lot of words on this slide, I'm not going to go through them, I just wanted to explain to you that when we are in, at a point where we're not in agreement with a family about a placement, there is a process that's prescribed by the state and federal government that we go through. Typically, we try to avoid that when we can. I think that we really do our very best, and Carol and Mary Ann, as I mentioned earlier, we really do our best to create relationships with families that are open and honest and trusting, and we give that message to our staff, and so when we have very large meetings with attorneys, which we occasionally do, we always seek to have an environment that is respectful and kind, and where everyone listens, and at the conclusion of which, we can agree to disagree, and then we can move into this process if it's necessary. But I really don't like it, and I'd rather try to avoid it if we could. This is a comparative chart of the percentage of district expenditures, and the total special education expenditures, and the percentage of identified students in all of our DURC districts. You will notice that we are solidly in the lower end of all three categories. This is the most current information that's available, and it is from this past school year. The reporting needed to be done by October 1st. I mentioned related services earlier. I just wanted to let you know that those are services that students need in order to benefit from their special ed program, typically in addition to their special education program, and the examples are there. We have really well-qualified and wonderful therapists in all of these areas that I have a high level of confidence in, in terms of the work that they do with their students, and also how they report out at these meetings. They are, it is very comforting to listen to them, and I always feel compelled to send an email or to say a thank you on the way out, because they work really hard and they're very good at what they do. And so this is just a slide that shows you all of the array of related services. I used the term student support professionals earlier. This is the group of combined school social work, school psychology, and school counseling group, and this is the group that, as I mentioned earlier, Nora Daly has the responsibility for kind of overseeing. And these are some of the responsibilities that this group has. A broad variety of different assessments and evaluations, some counseling, they all work on behavior. Many of them chair or definitely participate in a deeper way in our planning and placement team meetings, and our SST meetings, which are student-study team meetings, and those are general education meetings that are held in every building to look at issues of need of students before they're identified. All the documentation that I talked to you about, they have a major role in the completion of that. They're also instrumental in any kind of crisis management situation, when there are situations and we are on the phone with them, and working through protocols that they've designed and organized, and they're very well-trained. We focus on parent communication, they also, with them, they also provide a variety of different presentations in their school buildings, and they all have a role in school climate and their building in different ways. Assistive technology is another component of our related services, and the state guidelines for assistive technology indicate that it's a necessary component, and that we have to look at each identified child to see if they have a need in this area. Ashley Tremblay, who is here this evening as well with Carol and Mary Ann, is our assistive technology specialist. Ashley presented to the board last spring, and her presentation is posted on the New Canaan Public Schools website, so if you'd like more information about assistive technology, it's there. But basically, it's any kind of a device or service that helps a child to access their education, which is true for all the related services areas, and to improve their function and to have them be more independent. We have to look at the provision of it for all of our students between ages three and 21, and as I said, when they're having difficulty accessing a task like reading, or language, or speaking, we look at an assistive technology evaluation, and the reasons are there. It helps us to have a student show their abilities in a better way, and to, otherwise, when something might not be possible for them, it actually can make it possible, and part of the presentation that Ashley did in the spring showed a video of some students who had not been able to do some things in terms of reading or even speaking, and there are wonderful things technologically now that Ashley knows all about, that I don't pretend to, but she's educating me, that help kids every day, and it's a wonderful Also, under our umbrella is school nursing, and just so that you're aware, we have one nurse for each elementary school, two nurses at Saks, two at New Canaan High School, and our district nursing supervisor, whose name is Sue Cesario. And this is an example of some of the things they do. You know, all of the normal things that you would think that a school nurse would do, and in addition to that, they are actually members of all the teams that I talked about. So the planning and placement team meeting, the 504 team meetings, crisis committee and wellness committee. Also, they have the responsibility for helping us to monitor and edit or revise any school policies or procedures that are medically-based. Sue and the nurses also act as liaisons to doctors in a variety of different capacities in terms of getting information that we need to help a student to access their education. Another new thing in the last few years that nurses have had to really focus more on is concussion management. We have spent a great deal of time, actually on every level, but mostly middle and high school, helping students and families to work through a concussion situation, and working with their doctors in terms of what a good plan would be for them, in terms of their return to school and their ability to be able to function in the setting. Also, our challenge program, which is the program for gifted and talented, the state provides in the law that we look at identifying the top 5% of our student population. We have to follow a PPT process for this identification as well, and our total identification rate, as it stands right now, is around 8%, and I was general about that. That's for grades three and eight, because we are just finishing up our identification process meetings at the end of this week, and we'll have, typically, I receive a report on by-grade level, by gender, and we know the exact numbers and percentages for each grade and for each school building. I'm sorry, I left out the fact that the challenge program has one teacher that's shared between the three elementary schools, and then two teachers at Saks, one that manages the fifth year. elementary schools and then two teachers at Saks, one that manages the fifth and sixth grade program and one that manages the seventh and eighth grade program. I spoke about section 504 earlier. Pupil Services also oversees this area and each student who qualifies for a 504 plan at a school meeting must be monitored regularly and their plan has to be reviewed at least annually by the team. Typically, these plans are written for students who have some sort of a medical issue that could be temporary or maybe pers, maybe permanent, that they need some sort of an accommodation for in the educational setting. 504 requires a district 504 coordinator by, by law, that's me, and a 504 coordinator at each building. Typically, that's an assistant principal at the three elementaries. And the majority of the assistant principals at Saks and at the high school. And they chair meetings for students who require a plan in this setting. School climate and safety is also one of our areas and each district has the responsibility for school climate and safety details that are named here by the state statute. So we're required to do all the things that you see here by law. And Nora District, Nora Daley, our district student supports coordinator, as I said earlier, presented to you and last spring. And she will return again this year, I'm sure, at some point. All of the PowerPoints that she and/or people who came with her presented are also available on the New Canaan Public Schools website. So these are some of the details of the mandates around school climate and safety. Some of the tasks that we're required to do. So we have to have plans for school security and safety at each school. We have to have committees at each school that consist of all the people that are mentioned there. And we have to collect and evaluate instances of threatening or violent behavior that, that isn't classified under the bullying regulations. And we also have to do the same thing for the ones that are. And we are also required to have mental health first aid training for the district's safe school coordinators. I've shared a lot of information about all the areas of pupil services this evening and I wanted to really bring us back to what our work is all about. And that is meeting the needs of our students and their families. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our work. It really couldn't be done without an extremely skilled and compassionate staff who work in New Canaan. And I'd like to thank them all as well, even though they'll probably never hear this. They are really the backbone of the work that gets done and, and I'm really proud of the work that gets done. So thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ms. Pianko, for your comprehensive overview of, you know, the New Canaan Public Schools pupil services department. And I commend you and your staff on all the good work that you do to make sure that all the students in this district, no matter what their ability levels are, are getting, you know, the skills they need to progress and move forward. So thank you very much. Is there other, I'm going to open up to questions. So does anybody have questions for Hazel?
I had two things. And I, I wanted to repeat something that I've already said to Darlene. As I was outside the voting this year, two weeks ago, a nice woman came up to me and I hadn't ever met her before, but I wanted everyone on the staff to know about, that she hugged me and said, "I just want to thank you for having the special ed program." Well, I certainly didn't, I felt very inadequate because it's an entire board, first of all, and not to mention the entire staff that does this, which I explained to her. And she said, "I just want you to know how much you've helped our family and helped our, particularly one child and their family. Just to let you know, we appreciate that and think it's very special." I wanted to ask a question about where do you think special ed will be going next? Are there any things that we should be thinking about that might be more helpful in our program in any way that we could help or assist you or help your staff?
I think that we're always very focused on, on training for our staff in a variety of different areas. And as time has evolved and Carol and I, Carol and Mary Ann and I have been together for a long time, we've had a lot of dialogue around what the needs of the district are. And we base that on what we see ourselves and the feedback that we get from our staff. We also base that on the population that we have and the needs that they are currently exhibiting. So it will always be helpful to look at how to manage behaviors more effectively because that is a big issue, especially with our population of students with autism. We've worked very hard to create a, more of a breadth of skill in all of our special education teachers so that they are not uniquely qualified to do or work with one particular population of students. And that's required some training beyond, I think, what the norm is. I think that speech and language will always be an area where our speech and language pathologists are very skilled, but there are very, there are always new and more precise methods for looking at speech-related disabilities that we need to be current on. Our families are very well-aware of what the current practice and what the best practice is. And so if we aren't aware of that and we don't deliver the best practice, then we're not doing the best job that we can. So we're always looking in those areas to improve. The other focus moving forward, and, and it always has been, reading and how our students at a very early age learn to read and when they aren't learning correctly, what, what the need becomes in terms of an identified disability. And so looking at scientifically research-based methodology that teaches children how to read in a proven way and having many of our teachers trained in the Orton-Gillingham-based reading methodology for the last few years and continuing on into next year, because I just did the budget and we're planning. Typically, the, the teacher training in that area is several years. And we actually have a few of the highest level of training teachers, you know, I think in the area. So we're, we are always looking at research. We are always wanting to know what's new in those areas. And I don't see that, I see that as becoming more complex in the future. And, you know, I think that in terms of avoiding some of the, the complications of PPT meetings in terms of disagreement, I firmly believe that if you have the best-trained staff and they are very articulate about what they know and they can deliver, then we will be in a very good place moving forward and that's never going to change. It's just going to become more and more complex. And so we, we do invest a fairly good amount of time and financial obligation in the training and growth and development of our teachers. But we do that with, with our general education teachers as well. As you might guess, the level of expectation for our staff is, is equally as great as it is for the general education staff. And we have a high bar here. And so it may be more difficult to work in New Canaan and be special education teacher or a related service provider, but we have a standard that we will continue to subscribe to.
If I can just piggyback on that very quickly. Given the, the increasing level of complexity that Darlene's talking about, we are taking a look at our staffing structure a bit prior to this year's budget to look and make sure that we've got our resources going exactly where it needs to go. And there may be more conversation about that, I think, as the, the budget process begins and continues. I also just want to say quickly, the, the other movement that's really touched me probably the most is the, the workaround assistive technology that's really come about in the last couple of years. Some of our, our neediest learners are finding ways into reading, into communication, into mathematics, that just a couple of years ago didn't exist. And it's really life-changing stuff. So I think as we, as we continue to progress down that road, you know, we've got great people in the area. Ashley's doing a wonderful job, as her whole team is. And the, I think it's really changing people's lives in powerful ways. So those are two other areas that we're going to be looking at and continuing to look at and explore, sort of making sure that we're as responsive, as responsive as we need to be to the changing complexity and demands around the system. And also making sure that we are putting our resources where they have the greatest impact for our kids and families.
I, thank you, Brian. I agree with that. And, and I would embellish the point that I made earlier about the number of planning and placement team meetings, the level of documentation that gets generated from those. And in addition to that, the observation and evaluation of all of the special education and related services staff that whenever we can, we do in collaboration with general education, but they are, they're very busy with their work. And so, you know, we're finding the need to, you know, really look at the possibility of other structures for making sure that observation and evaluation gets done moving into the future.
Sherri?
Darlene, I also want to thank you for all of your work. And obviously, inclusive education is, is a value that our board holds very highly. I actually think it would be instructive to add a page on the benefits of, of an inclusive school environment on the typical students. Because I know, speaking as a parent for my own three kids, I could talk for a very long time about the benefits of, of going to a public school in a diverse, inclusive environment. My question is, again, back to the resources and really focusing in on the middle school years and, and really the identification of the, the mental health issues and the emotional disturbance, that slice of the pie, that, you know, what is the process? You showed the PPT process for when, when a need is identified. But in that middle school zone where a lot of kids will matriculate through their tenure at Saks without ever having met with their counselor, what is that process for kind of, you know, honing in on that student population and identifying kind of those unknown needs?
Earlier, when I mentioned response to intervention, what I would add to what I said about it is that we're, Jill and I are working together in terms of the process of looking at the behavioral side of that triangle, which basically means that we need to look at the, the behavior and social and emotional wellbeing of all of our students. And that's part of response to intervention. And so creating, developing and creating more organized structures for looking at students who might be having difficulty in that area, things like monitoring attendance, monitoring nursing office visits, really looking at a child that might be struggling that either has identified themselves in that way to a counselor. Or we're looking at a, a number of, I would call them benchmark factors because it's similar to, you know, what we do with the academic component and really having the clinical team be part of that meeting and being more in tune to issues of concern and really looking at how to manage them and get into the loop of conversation, dialogue and planning interventions and working with families around that.
So can I just ask a follow-up question? So I've, looking at the high school model where on day one, the freshman student meets with their counselor and then remains with that counselor over their high school career, is there, are there other best practice models out there where we have more of that student-counselor connection in the, in the middle school years?
We've actually had a little bit of dialogue in the last year or so about, actually Jill and I, about trying to think about the model that we have currently and, and really make some decisions about what's best moving forward because all of the research talks about the fact that a, a child who is in despair in whatever way, needs to have an adult to go to. And they need to have an adult that they can identify with and feel comfortable with and will talk to. And so changing that person every year is, is a complicated thing, you know, I think. And that's not to say that they can't have wonderful relationships with a counselor for one year and that information gets conveyed, but I think that it's probably a less efficient model. So it, it is something that we've thought about. So thank you for bringing that up.
Penny?
Again, my thanks to your entire team. And it's great to see you here because it's, I know how, how well you all work together and I get such positive feedback about all the work you do. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
We want to pile on the thanks tonight. But I guess one of the questions I had with the rate of autism at one in 68 and just some of the casual reading that I've done around it, they talk about how important it is to have intervention at an early age. So the New Canaan school and our, our obligation comes in at age three. But do we do anything to identify students who'll be coming to us when they're three years old, if they're in the community and direct them to the types of resources?
Yeah, I may not have embellished this point.
That they need?
But one of, actually, how we receive those children is from a system that's called birth to three. So they've been identified through their pediatrician typically. And they are children that we know about as they're nearing their third birthday. The system itself, the state system itself, provides the services, not the school district. And so when it comes to the point where we're planning for that child to come to public school, which is a couple of months before their third birthday, typically, Mary Ann has a running list of, you know, who's in, in the back pipeline and we can plan and we know who they are a couple of months in advance. We've had a conversation with parents. We'll have the PPT on their, on or close to their third birthday. And we will have been in the loop of what the services have been that have been delivered and then we'll plan a program in our preschool. So, you know, it's, it's not like we get them and we don't know. And what I would say about the autism piece is, you know, if you, you're doing some reading, then what you will notice is that there are a couple of broad categories that need to be addressed, yes, as early on as possible. And those are, are speech and things like speech and behavior and relatedness and being in with, that's why the being in with typical peers, to be able to see general education programming in children and try to assimilate into that. Typically, and as you probably know, autism is a spectrum disorder. And so we can have children who are very involved and require a very high level of service and some students don't. And their services in terms of direct instruction are not as deep, but they may be in another area. They may be in the area of social skills and, and everything that's related to that. But to get back to originally what you asked, yes, the earlier the better. And over the course of the preschool and elementary years for children who have autism, they have very meaty programs with a lot of related services. And typically, they're in the speech and occupational therapy areas as well as the direct instruction in the academic piece.
Jen?
Thank you.
I want to thank you as well. We are so fortunate to have you and your team, like Penny said, I mean, piling on the thanks. So all we get such great feedback and so important. So thank you. And I actually was going to ask, actually, similar to Penny. So if, when, at three years old, like if we, let's say with growing enrollment, et cetera, are we able to accept, like, what, I mean, what are your numbers in the preschool at West? I mean, are we able to accept everyone that applies? Like, do they apply or?
You mean in terms of the typical peers? Or do you mean our identified students?
The typical peers. So you're talking 50/50, like 50% possibly on, you know, special education and 50%, right? Normal? Oh, not normal, but typical, exactly. But are we able to accept all children that need the service?
Oh, absolutely. We're required to, actually. So if they're identified, then we have to plan a program for them. And over the last 10 years that I've been working with Mary Ann on this, our enrollments have varied, but they've never gone beyond what we can manage in the number of classes we've had. We have never added staff. There may have been a year or two where we've had to add some speech because some of the students really require a, a deep degree of speech service. But our special education teaching staff has pretty much remained constant.
Okay. And then what about the launch program? Is that state mandated as well?
The launch program, well, programming for 18 to 21-year-olds who need it is mandated. What it is, isn't mandated. We actually, about five years ago, and I have to give Carol all of the credit for this, Carol Bocalla, in our conversations about some of our students who were in need of those services and they were being provided at the high school through kind of an extension of our programming. And really, the conclusion that we drew in our conversation was that the program needed to be off-site because the students have felt like they have finished chronologically high school and in the community, which addresses the areas that are required by law and, I think nicely. And so that, that program was created, you know, a couple of years back. We feel that it's programmatically the best plan that we could make for them. It's very successful. It sometimes precludes us from being in a disagreement with a family who may want to privately place their child in a very expensive... privately place their child in a very expensive post-secondary experience, I would call it. It's programming that goes on for students with deep needs until the age of 21 that's private. And typically, they are residential programs and they're very expensive. And so although that's not the reason we created the program, it's been a benefit, because we've been able to say that we can provide a, a really good program in district. And if they are going to, to live in this community, then they need to be able to understand it and access it and enjoy it as everyone else does.
Sangita?
I knew that your team does some amazing work. It's a complex issue, but just to even get that information about how much time goes into doing a lot of these state mandated programs, all the writing, the reports that have to go in, it's a real credit to you guys to get that all into a 25-hour day.
It's hard, Sangita.
Yeah, just one question, I had a couple of questions, but one, just to follow up since you've been talking about the launch program. Do many of our kids go through the whole way to the launch? I mean, do you find consistency where, you know, they start out at three years old and they kind of go through the system, or is there a lot of movement?
There is every year typically a very small number of students who transition into the program. And the program has never had more than six or seven students. But they are six or seven students who have great need. And so they require, in the beginning, a high level of supervision and, and service. But it's not, no, not, not a, not a majority of our students need the launch program. As I said earlier, typically, the majority of the students who are under the category of learning disabled or speech and language impaired go on to college and/or a post-secondary experience. This is a small number of students.
So the other question I had was, is that benchmarks, I mean, we talked about some of the benchmarks there. Are there state mandated benchmarks like we have for our typical students for this special group of students? Or is it really individualized and, you know?
Well, typically, we look to use the same benchmarks. That's not always possible or realistic, but it's the standard that's set. And, and, and that's the standard for the district. And so, you know, we have a clear understanding of what a student's capability is. We always want to, as we do with every child here, have them perform at their best ability level. So, you know, I think every team in every building knows what the benchmarks are for every child. They also have an understanding of what the child's disability is that they're discussing, and they know what the reality of it is in terms of where, what they can achieve and how to measure that. Actually, the IEP document and the process that goes along with it provides for a progress monitoring system that is required by law. And so the goals and objectives that get created for that document, and they're pretty lofty, all have to be measured. You have to tell how you're measuring them, and you have to give a percentage for the success of that. And then on a quarterly basis, each teacher and service provider has to look at the IEP document and mark whether or not, whether or not they've made satisfactory progress or whether they've mastered the goal or whether they've made unsatisfactory progress. So we, we, we look at the, the typical benchmarks, but we also have our own system that's really individually based, that's pretty intricate.
And then, as one other comment I just wanted to make, that what's great, I mean, you've been talking a lot about the academic programs, but I, I do know you also extend into the extracurriculars. Because I have, you know, had seen these children being able to do, say, for example, drama and be in, in the theater plays and such, which is, I think, such a wonderful opportunity. Because I don't think that's very common in many school districts, to have them actually integrate into some of these type of really special programs that we have for our typical students to be enjoyed by, you know, this group.
We really do, as much as possible, try to include kids in every way. And part of that, not just as the law, which really does prescribe that you need to provide similar experiences to the typical peers in terms of the extracurricular activities, it's always been a philosophical bent that, that we've shared. And so, yes, you will, there are probably many, many students that you don't recognize who are identified that participate in varied ways, athletically, in terms of the drama and instrumental and choral programs. And it's very important to them and their families. And it's something that Carol and Mary Ann also and their staffs work very hard to orchestrate. And sometimes it's very complicated. I want to go back to what Sheri said earlier in terms of the fact that it's also really good for the other kids. And so, you know, you'll have identified students who, if they're not actually playing in a sport or being in a play, they are an assistant to the team or they are painting sets in the background. So there's always some kind of a place for every child.
And I'll echo the, the fact, how beneficial it is for the other students, because I've seen many instances, you know, with kids going through the system, where they've really stepped up and they, they get a chance to be a nurturer to another child and teach them, and then they really embrace them and bring them in, you know, and helping in any way. It's great to be able to pull that from our, from the kids as they grow and develop that side of them.
It's really important.
We also have a couple of other programs, such as the Best Buddies Program here at the high school, where, again, for some of our neediest students, neediest learners, we match them up with other, with typicals that go in, they'll might, they'll work with them in their PE class and do other kinds of things with them, really amazing program that Priscilla Schultz put together. We also have the Unified Sports, where, again, it's typical and special education students working together and participating in events, you know, playing together, playing basketball, playing other things together. And again, Carol has been very involved with all of that. And it's really, it is powerful, you know? And I think it does speak to the culture that our department has and that our greater school community has, which is really a culture of care for every single one of our students.
There's also something called a lunch bunch at every level, elementary, middle, and high, where students volunteer to have lunch with students who are identified and have a social experience with them. And it's a planned activity to begin with, but I'd like to think more often than not, it's more spontaneous at some point.
Okay, Maria, I have to, I forget everybody's little. This is heavy.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And I know for a fact, you guys are really great and compassionate, and I can't believe the amount of time you dedicate in the meetings themselves. And a thousand meetings in a year is amazing. I just had a question, and I'm, I'm not sure if this actually falls under special ed, but do you think, the way the prevalence rates have dropped, do you attribute that to more intensive, the RTI that happens in advance? And if so, or I guess a separate question, about how, what's the percentage of students being serviced under RTI, if you know that, if, if not?
My response to the first part of your question is yes, absolutely. That, you know, since RTI has begun, on the elementary level, our prevalence rates have gone down considerably. We're still working on the middle school and, and high school rate. I think it will always be the case that response to intervention meets certain needs at the elementary school. And then as material and curriculum become more complex, sometimes on the middle school level, we, we do need to move toward identification, and that's the trend that we're seeing. That doesn't mean that Jill and I don't have a lot of dialogue around response to intervention needs on the middle and high school level. We have a committee that's actually working on that right now in terms of actually, you know, looking in greater depth at the systems on the middle and high school level moving forward. So we do need to do some work there. I don't have a rate for response to intervention that's non-special ed, but we could get that for you, I'm sure.
Penny?
I had a question about the Gifted and Talented Program. If I recall, it could have changed since I last checked, the seventh and eighth grade, they have, the gifted and talented children have a class together, and in fifth and sixth grade, it's pull-out. But sixth grade is based upon a team system like seventh and eighth grade. And I was just wondering if you all had ever considered doing a class with gifted and talented at the sixth grade level as, to move it to the seventh and eighth grade model? Or, and what would be the pros and cons of doing so?
It's not a discussion that we've had recently, to be completely honest with you. I think that, that the teachers who are at Saks have, have also been in their places for a really long time, have really strong opinions around what the research says and, and best practice. And I know that they are comfortable with the model that we have. I think that, and I've observed, you know, in both, both respects that you just defined, it's certainly something that, you know, we could talk about. It's not anything that they've brought up recently, so.
Actually, just to clarify, starting in fifth grade, the challenge class supersedes the social studies class, so.
It is a class. Is that what you were asking?
From fifth grade, it is a class?
Yes, that starts, so the seventh, eighth model is in fifth and sixth grade.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking.
There you go, I'm educated. Thank you. Thank you. That was what I was asking.
Yes.
Well done, from every angle.
Okay!
I approve.
See, she even anticipates the question. She gets years ahead of it.
Even though I didn't understand the question.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Hazel?
I have one question about, have you seen an impact on the, having the preschool, on the impact on the kids that have gone through the preschool program? Has it, has it changed the numbers or helped kids to go further or?
I guess what I would say to you about that is, I don't think it will ever be the case that a child that has a comprehensive preschool program doesn't do better in kindergarten. And that's true for every child, but it's especially true for kids who have disabilities. And it's, it's really important, and we've had this conversation recently as well, for that, the planning of that transition from the, the second year of preschool into kindergarten to be orchestrated meticulously, because the kindergarten classroom is very different than the preschool. And so we may think that we've prepared our kids beautifully, but the, the change of structure of a kindergarten classroom is difficult to adapt to. And so we're still working on ensuring that our kids with most deepest need transition into kindergarten in the best way possible, because they still require a lot, a high level of service. And the structure of a kindergarten classroom is, is something that they, they need to navigate, and it's complicated. But we really feel like we give them a very comprehensive program with some really good teaching and some, some really good related services that they benefit from and that impact them. I mean, of course, that continues, but it's a really good two years. And they're in an elementary school, and their teachers know the kindergarten curriculum, and they know how to prepare them. They know the kindergarten curriculum for New Canaan public schools. So I think that's, you know, it's a definite advantage. And the other thing that I didn't mention is our special education teachers and related staff on the preschool level also work with the preschools in district, in town. And so they have relationships where kids that they're seeing in the typical preschools who they may have a concern about, there's a process for referral for observation or evaluation. So we're in the opposite loop as well in terms of knowing who's out there that might be transitioning into kindergarten, that might need, not need our preschool program, but might need a little higher level of support. So I think we have all the bases covered.
You know, I have, I have one final question. We're, we're heading into budget season, and I know you're preparing your budget. And you spoke about, you know, sort of training and, and needing training, ongoing training for the educators in the special education department. Are there things that, you know, you haven't been able to do because of budgetary constraints that, you know, you'd like to, in, in a perfect world, in a perfect budget world, you'd like to see?
There's one thing that I'd like to see, and I think you'll find out about it in about two weeks. But it's big. Stay tuned. And thank you for asking.
Okay. If there's no more questions, thank you, Darlene, as always.
Thank you, everyone.
Wonderful presentation. Okay, moving on, I'm assuming there's no, no one here that wants to make a comment from the public? So we'll move into announcements and future meetings. Dr. Lutzey?
We do not have a meeting next week. We do have one on the 30th, which is the Monday after the Thanksgiving break. I've mentioned earlier, we have Patrice McCarthy, who is the Cabe Deputy Director and General Counsel, who will be coming to give us an update on legislative issues. They're preparing to go into the new session, so the timing is right to get an update on what's kind of stirring up at the state and how it may impact boards of ed and school districts. We also, I'll have the first read of the budget assumptions to present. We will be having our statement of accounts for last month, so it would be for October. And we'll also have an executive session with Attorney Belik for a legal update to catch up on some of the things going on with the district on that side of things. We did, it's a much longer agenda than we have tonight. We took it easy on you all tonight. We didn't want to scare anybody away. But I do, since I, I do have a chance, this is announcements, to say once again, congratulations and welcome to our new board members. We started with a very light topic, special education. One of the most complex topics and something that I continue to learn about every time I talk to Darlene about it, and I know you'll have the same experience too as we go. But we also thought it being a significant part of the budget of the district and of our operations, that it was a good way to spend the night together. So, thank you, Darlene, and again, welcome. We look forward to a, a great year ahead as we start to move into our budget process.
All right. If there's nothing else on the agenda, could I get a motion to adjourn? Sheri? And a second? Sangita? All those in favor? Unanimous motion. We're adjourned.
Thank you.